Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the June tenth community, the whole meeting. I'd like to recognize that these meetings are being held on traditional territory of the Dunne's Creek and Dunne, sorry, the Dunne Creek and Dunne's people of Fort Halsen Prophet River First Nations. We further recognize the rights that are provided by our treaty. And we also celebrate contribution during presence of the M A T culture in our region. So please be advised that portions of this afternoon's meeting will be available to the public to attend virtually and are being streamed and recorded. Does counsel have any additions for this meeting? Staff? Thank you. There's a public comment period. Is there anybody who wishes to comment on anything that's on this afternoon's agenda online? No? But is okay with the agenda the way it is? A little bit of a flip. We'll go in camera first and then come back. So just an agreement that we can go in camera and then we'll shut off the cameras and close the doors and get at it. Okay, we're all okay. Okay, we'll do that now. Okay, so. Recall this meeting, there's nothing to report from the closed in-camera portion of the meeting. New business items wasn't on until we got the post-evacuation emergency operations update. From staff. Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks, Bear. So I'll just, just, just first off. Welcome back, everyone. It's good to see everyone's faces in real time and not on a computer screen. Uh, just want to provide an update as to. Where we are today and what to expect in the coming days, weeks, months from a E O C perspective. Um, the event we had. There's a community meeting Wednesday at six. Part of that would be a presentation regarding the event that focuses on the evacuation itself. E S S. And repatriate the community. That's the focus there. To get feedback from, from, from the community, basically provide information, get feedback and answer questions. Um, B C Wildfire Service will provide a status update at the start of the meeting so they can, they'll provide where, where things are in terms of. Current fire situation status, what they have for resources and whatnot. Other agencies that are going to participate Wednesday will be the R C and P. Um, which they'll be, looks like at this point, participating virtually. Uh, Emergency Management Climate Readiness, so E M C R. We were advised that today, but R C and P, so they were originally showing up in person, but apparently something else occurred.
Similarly, about twenty-four hours during the evacuation.
E M. E M C R, so Emergency Management Climate Readiness. Northern Rockies Fire Rescue, which is in here, our department, and then our ourselves. So as I said, there'd be, there'd be an opportunity to ask questions. Um, and provide their feedback, feedback regards to that. Today, we're literally a month to the day since we evacuated, so it was a May tenth evacuation, maybe June tenth. Part of this process is thanking everybody who was involved and participated and gave their, gave their all. Um, a lengthy list, we're gonna start, you know, part of the process would be trying to get that list. Um, and, and, and just reach out and do what we can to thank all individuals, that's, uh, you know, locals. Uh, agencies, there's just too many to mention, but just. People that went another way to, 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 to do what they felt was the right thing and to, to assist the community. Um, and of course, the staff here, um, this, I mean, the staff, uh. I can't, I can't thank them enough or, or provide enough accolades for what, what they did and stepped up to their plate to. To, uh, deal with the situation from an E O C perspective when you come into this organization, these types of organizations, you don't sign up for this. You sign up to, you know, you know, local government employee and, uh, well, black and better words to bureaucrat and to come into this and, and there was some. Some long days and, uh, and, and they're up to the task. It was pretty impressive to watch, I gotta say. Some, uh, some of the milestone dates, I'll call them milestones, but basically, uh, so the evacuation order due to that Parker Lake fire was, uh, May tenth. The order was lifted on May twenty-seventh and downgraded to an alert. Uh, so approximately sixteen days. Just on the seventeen day, the alert, uh, the alert was lifted June seventh, so last Friday after getting recommendation from wildfire that. The community, uh, from a threat perspective, from threat of wildfire, that threat has been significantly reduced and that was a. Combination of a number of things in weather, mother nature definitely cooperated with cooler weather and a little bit of precipitation. Um, and a significant amount of work that occurred from a suppression perspective and resources that were provided, uh. As an example, from B C wildfire. The soul or the state of local emergency was renewed and amended on June seventh. Um, and continues on till June twenty-first. At eleven fifty-nine, June twenty-first. The soul covers, the, the soul itself covers the Parker Lake fire perimeter. Uh, so significantly reduced compared to where it was before. Um, but, but it's in place to, uh, to, to, to allow us to prohibit entry in certain areas, one of the areas, the Parker Lake rec site. And some of the impacted properties that have maybe a hazard to public safety and whatnot before the property owners can take. Over that property again, there's some areas, so, so that. Soul is required to enable us to prohibit entry in certain areas within, um, within the, uh. Where the event occurred. Uh, current status, uh, Parker Lake is, has been classified as under control. Uh, which means it's doesn't, that they don't, that wildfire based on current conditions. Future outlook, it's not going to, they, they, um, project it's not going to expand existing perimeter. Doesn't mean it's out. There'll be some offers and some smoke in certain areas, but based on the work that's been done. Uh, and the current location and where that fire perimeter is, they don't expect it to expand existing perimeter and cause an issue. Patrick Creek Fire is still classified as out of control. Uh, B C wildfire indicated that the recent weather and suppression efforts, uh, worked. Worked in their favor and our, our favor. It was a significant amount of efforts, um, suppression that occurred in southeast flank of that fire to help. Potential growth towards community. Um, they've done fair amount of work on the eastern, sorry, the western flank to help, uh, protect Highway seventy-seven. And work, they said, they basically were capping an end on, on the eastern flank to, to help mitigate the growth. Because prevailing winds typically blow that, that northwest direction or either northwest, so blow, blow the fire east. Still have a number of fires in landscape. When you get up to the northeast corner of B C, not a whole lot of precipitation. Uh, they haven't seen the precipitation that we did. And it's interesting, the amount of, the amount of precipitation that's fallen in B C, uh, and the northeast corner is dry. The fortunate thing with the amount of precipitation that's fallen in B C is that the resource requests that come in from the incident management team are typically fulfilled because. Fortunately for us, we're not seeing a demand in other areas of the province, so. Significant knockdown, with significant, so, so rain anywhere is good. Quite frankly, right? Rain anywhere is good. Um. Significant amount of resources, uh, like I said, B C wildfire, I'll, I'll put some, uh. Numbers out there Wednesday in terms of where they are as, as of Wednesday. Um, but during mid-last week, they were pushing close to, you know, four hundred personnel. In community and, uh, twenty-plus rotary wing, uh, so helicopters, so. So lots of, lots of resources, uh, and, and they intend to continue to stay deployed. Uh, more Wednesday is a changeover day for the new incident management team, so that'll be our. Fourth incident management team, fifth incident management team, fifth, our fifth incident management team. And they still feel that they'll, they still have a lot of work to do and intend to be here, um, until the conditions, uh. Shift and they're, and they're, and they're in a place they feel they can leave. And currently, our E O C is currently activated at level one, so we are still activated, um, during the, uh. During the middle of the whole process, of course, during the height, the whole process, we were at, obviously at level three and, and, and flat out. Um, we're at a currently a level one or a level one and a half, because. We're not, uh, we're not at our kind of cruising altitude, because there's still lots going on, there's still lots of work to do. Um, so it's, it's digging a fair bit into our, uh, into our capacity and, um, and we're still working off, uh. Uh, provincial task number. What to expect coming up in the future days and weeks and months, we've got, uh. We've, we've, for the most part, currently, actually, we're, we have the majority of our, of our services restored, so that, that took a fair amount of. Fair amount of effort and work on our end, because moving the E O C, um. Was, uh, was a daunting task in itself, moving back was equally, uh, it was equal or tough. It was easier to cut wires leaving here. Re-splace those wires coming back were a little bit more difficult, so, so. So, uh. Restoring some services was challenging, but again, it's great work by the crew and the group to, uh, to get back online and we systematically. Probably we prioritize the areas of the organization we had to get back online first. And, uh, and we, uh, we, and then had some Marines, of course. And, and part of that would be, uh, because this process was uncharted territory for us and for many organizations, it's one thing to act. One thing to evacuate a community is another thing to evacuate your E O C. And, uh, that, uh, that, that was a, I mean, when, when you look, when we look back and see what occurred, it was pretty impressive. Uh, process in terms of, in terms of what, what, what had to happen to maintain that type of, uh. That, that elevated response, I guess. We're in the process of doing, uh, so when the process is planning a full debrief, so the intent would be as we go forward to have a full debrief on the whole process itself. Um, what will, what was called action and after-action review, and we're in currently in discussions with a third party to facilitate that process for us. We want a fairly in-depth review, it's not something that we're prepared to do ourselves from a capacity perspective or even the knowledge perspective. To be honest, so that'll be, uh. Uh, an organization led by a previous B C wildfire, uh, person, individual and E M C R individual that does this. Last year, they did three big events in the lower mainland and have a number of other events that they've done in their history. From emergency management perspective, not just fire, but fire flood, landslides, but evacuation and whatnot, so. So we intend to involve all the agencies, appropriate agencies, part of that discussion. Um, and really get on the, the, the process and, and look for opportunities to. Um, obviously improve our processes, also be prepared next time, because. Learn, learn from those experiences, but also be able to provide us some really good documentation when we have conversations with the province. Um, we're, we're, we've never liked being the first or the ones that have to research and develop, but this case. The, the new, uh, emergency management legislation, we were the first to exercise that new legislation in the absence of regulations. Right? So, so new rules, no rulebook. Um, so, so one of the things that we're gonna do is, is, our intent is to, is, is to, and, and we've already. You know, we've already started these conversations and advised the various agencies and advise the province, but the intent is to have that. Is, is to, is to hopefully have a seat at the table of the province to help develop some of those regulations. And to provide feedback on the process and where we see, uh, where we see as an organization opportunities, especially given our location. Um, because there's some parts of the process that, uh, that are, aren't necessarily geared for in the, you know, community that needs to move for ourselves. As an example. Um, so that, so that's in the, that's in those conversations are current, are currently occurring and, uh, again, it's not gonna happen next week. Or we finish next week, for any stretch of the imagination, but we do intend to spend time and, and spend a fair amount of. If I say resourcing that to, 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 to have a, a proper, very detailed. After-action plan and debrief as part of this process.
Question, or before you go on? Just in regards to the, uh, various agencies that will be gathered around to discuss, having been the first one to use the. The Emergency Act in the province without regulations. Um, can we have input into that as counsel? Just as a, at least one discussion around that, because there, there, we're, we're an agency too, and I would like to have discussions.
Yeah, we can. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, this is, this is. I mean, one of the reasons we're having the community feedback discussion is, is not just for ourselves, which is to help prepare for it and then of course, we, we counsel. I mean, uh, um, I mean, we, we have our laundry list of agencies that we know we wanna have participate in this discussion and, uh. And in some cases, we know what kind of discussion we may need, we may need to have with them. Right? But, uh, we wanna drive out the, uh, we wanna, we wanna flush out what occurred. So it can help support those discussions too, right?
And, you know, if, if on tonight's agenda is, is a, a motion to support Aaron's application to sit on that committee. And then so if that is, if that recommendation is taken by the province, she gets that opportunity to sit on that committee, we'll have an opportunity to, to feed through her. To the entire process.
One of the things we go through this whole process, I mean, the, the event hopefully is behind us in terms of the activity, but. The resulting activities are gonna keep us busy for quite some time, so one of the conversations that will be had with council here over coming weeks too is. Capacity and what that looks like and what's, especially from the executive level in terms of the amount of required capacity to. To maintain this momentum, um, something that's important that council is aware of, of where we sit and, and, and. And what some options may or may not be moving forward in terms of looking at that, because. I think for this organization, this community, it's important that we do, do our best to get this right and it's gonna take that capacity. Aaron sitting on a committee, for example, even the absence of that is gonna take up a significant amount of time. I mean, we spend a lot of time still today, I mean, we're only a couple of weeks in or after this process, but, uh. It's, it's gonna take a fair amount of capacity, it's a conversation I'll be having with council here coming up. Um. As could be expected when you go to these types of events, a lot of funds of an expense, a significant amount of funds of an expense. Um, our E M O budget will be, from an expense perspective, is, is, uh, gonna be extremely high compared to, uh. Uh, what the budget was. Um. What's that? Harbors have spent a lot of money, yeah, um. That said, there's, there's, there's a fair amount of that, uh, that those expenses that, that are recoverable from the province. Um, that's why we have a provincial task number. Uh, and, you know, with the E O C inactivated, um. And, uh, uh, things like the soul and whatnot depend on the situation from a response perspective. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of the expenses that are recoverable. Um, that said, it only happens, reimbursement only happens when we spend, let's call it an expense authorization form or E A F. But the justification hasn't happened for all of them, everything we spend, so that takes time and energy to do that. Um, and then it's reviewed by the province and then if it meets the eligibility, uh. If it meets the eligibility, then it's, it's reimbursed, sometimes it's denied, sometimes it's rationed it up to a different agency. Uh, sometimes when a portion of it's accepted. Or, and sometimes we're into a bit of a debate trying to prove our point, and so that, so that takes time and energy also. But for the most part, there's, you know, the, the, a significant amount of the, uh, expenses that, that's occurred have been, have been covered. The province and some stuff still in limbo. The intent, uh, once we, once we get, we sort through that information. We'll bring a fulsome report back to council to, to, to walk you through that in terms of what that expense looks like where we're sitting. Um, and then discuss the, uh, expenses that we had to incur as an organization. If we have the ability to absorb that through the existing budget or if we need to look at other options, i.e., uh. A reserve fund, like the financial stabilization, but where we have funds put aside for, for, um. Times like this, essentially, when you have unexpected expenses that you might not have covered off in your budget, so that's stuff that we'll bring forward later, once, once. The dust clears and we have an opportunity to see where everything is. Um. One of the areas that we'll be chatting sooner than later is the Cameron building, so as you're all aware, we moved the fire department to the Cameron building mainly at the time for, uh. A more efficient operation, safe operation, uh, based on the trajectory of, of the fire and what we needed with this fire department. We wanted, I mean, quite frankly, to be in a place where, um, that could withstand. Or possibly withstand wildfire from a field perspective and also protect our equipment, one of the last things I wanted and we wanted as an organization is to have. Our fire apparatuses in a position where they might, uh, be impacted by fire. Um, so currently, the, uh, fire department is being housed out of the, out of the Cameron building. We have arrangements made with the owner in terms of what a monthly fee would be for that, uh, working through some other options in the future. This is a short-term process at this point. The other piece with the Cameron building was the ability, because we had resources come, other structural resources come from the south, it was able to. Uh, it was fire departments or structural protection groups, they, uh, a lot of work and, um. Meetings and, and martial areas were at that, I'll call it that temporary fire hall, being the Cameron building. So the current intent was to maintain that location throughout the fire season. Especially if the risk of fire was still in the landscape, because to move them back and then move them there again at a later date isn't necessarily efficient. Takes a lot of time. Um, we're still working through that piece, we do have an, uh, an E A F in with the province to cover some of the costs for, which they've. Uh, ratcheted to the B C wildfire agency, so we'll be talking with them tomorrow. Um. So we have, uh, there's, there's a, there's a number of factors that influences what our recommendation would be specific to, to that building in the short term. With wildfire, including, uh, what costs we may, or could incur if we were to maintain, say, uh, that location until. End of September, for example, so. So we're still working to that piece and we'll bring more information back to council as, as we know more. I'm hoping to know a little bit more before the end of this week, to be honest with you, from, from a provincial, uh, support perspective. Um, that said. Spoiler alert, the Cameron building was on the, was on our list as, as a potential building for the fire department, given the work that's required. At the fire hall public workshop, which is some communication we've had with council. Um, we just weren't prepared to go this quickly at, at the time, because we're working on a business case in the background to, to either. Support a move of the fire department or not, and it comes down to, it comes down to costs to, to upgrade the existing facility being the, uh. The, we'll, we'll call the, I don't wanna call it the old fire hall. The fire hall that's currently not, uh, there's not part of fire people in there. Um. Uh, abbreviate it, so, so the, it comes down to a business case basically, and then they what's, what, what, what the cost would be to. Bring that, that facility up to code, knowing that currently the way it sits between the public works department and the fire department, it doesn't. Um, the building size doesn't fit and the fire department has, has a significant amount of work there, the actual. Facility itself from a cold perspective, but that's all things, that's the long game, the long-term game in terms of bringing that information for council. Uh. Think, I think that's, yeah, we had a lot of, we had lots of going on. Fire, uh, from a, I guess from a cost perspective, we'll get this stuff back, back to, uh, council here in the coming weeks when we have a better idea what that looks like. And we're hoping that, uh, we don't have to go through this anymore, this, uh, this season for sure. And obviously, part of the discussions moving forward is, is what's, what are the opportunities to, to mitigate a, a recurrence, right? Which, which was some of the things that we were working on prior to the evacuation. And we're hoping that, I mean, I think there's a silver lining with an evacuation, but if anything, it did put us on the map. And, you know, possibly seize the opportunity with opportunities with the province, see what kind of funding or opportunities we can have. And this part of the bigger process, Aaron sitting on committees, hopefully, um, the ability to meet with ministers in terms of process and, uh. The, uh. Opportunities to, uh, you know, do things like fuel mitigation and get that support, um, from the province.
Okay. Before I open it up to questions, I think I would like to, uh. I, I would like to thank staff. At all levels in our organization, because I think Scott has been modest in his praise for our staff. I think, um. They've done an amazing job that should make us all proud as, as leaders in the community and as members in the community. With the work that they've done, and I think. And I'm, I've repeated this multiple times, maybe I've repeated it to you, but I, I wanna repeat it again now because I think it's worth it. And I wanna get it. I wanna get it recorded. I think it was the Information Officer Mark, who is now the incident commander out there, just forget his last name. Mark Healy, who stood up in front of this group on. I remember which day it was, Saturday or maybe it was Monday. And said to them that on Friday, the tenth. Staff here came to work to be administrators, to be managers, be wreck workers, do the business of a municipality. And by that evening, they had stepped out of that and had moved this entire community four hundred kilometers to the south and had did it. Safely, nobody got hurt. And none of that, they stood up an entire supply chain of resources. To support. An army of firefighters that moved in here over, over the weekend. Um, they did that with some training, not a lot of practice, without any notice. Without any notice. On Saturday. I just sat in this room as, as a wildfire expert. Put a model in front of this team. That predicted that this community was gonna be burned by Monday morning. It was an extremely sobering picture that he put in front of this team on Saturday. And they sucked it up, they didn't panic. They knew they had a job to do, the decision was made not only to move the E O C on Sunday. But to move the entire operation and implement the Business Government Continuity Plan of this municipality. That was done Sunday afternoon and they were back up and running two hundred fifty kilometers to the south of here by two o'clock on Monday afternoon. It was a feat that was miraculous. Nothing short of a miracle, what this crew did. Plus, all the work was done under extreme amount of stress while they were separated from families. Plus, we had crews, staff members in host communities that were pulling their own weight there. Trying to do everything they could to help with E S S effort, to help us put community meetings on. And all of that was done outside of their normal operating, um, jobs. So it's, you know, it made me tremendously proud to see that happen from this crew and it tells me. What this crew was capable of doing, that we've been operating, you have all been operating under the premise that. Nobody's coming here to save us, we're doing it ourselves. And the staff proved that they've been thinking about that. Whether it was in the front of their mind or the back of their mind, they've all been. Thinking about what, what, how would I stand? And they all stood up in an amazing fashion. I wanna thank all of you for the work that you did. Now I'll open it up for questions.
Anybody have any? Counselor Griffin?
I think I'm gonna repeat some of the stuff you just spoke about and it's always give me a weird feeling when you and I are like speaking in the same. Here you go, tonight we are. I would just like to take a moment to express my heartfelt appreciation to the N R M staff who worked tirelessly. Leading up to and throughout the Parker Lake fire event and evacuation, evacuation. The list of staff is long and I don't want to inadvertently miss anybody, so I'm just gonna speak in generalities. And I'm gonna try really hard not to cry, but no promises. So for those of you who had to send their families on their way and stay behind. To ensure our well-being and that of our town, thank you. I can imagine what you felt as you said goodbye and then set about to fulfill your duties. For those who evacuated and worked to support us in all our host communities, thank you. We saw you, I have to tell you for me and others, it was very emotional to see your faces. To know that you were doing what you could, supporting us through all of this, so thank you. For those of you who have the enormous responsibility to make decisions to ensure our safety and our well-being. And that at the N R M area, I can't even imagine the emotional and physical toll that this has taken. Please know you did good. Your sacrifices are seen and so appreciated, and I for one and two are very proud of each and every one of you, thank you. And finally, to those who physically fought the fires, there are no words to express my gratitude, but baking will be forthcoming. But thank you, uh, we'll have to suffice for tonight, so from the bottom of my heart, thank you everyone.
Any other comments or questions? I think that was, that was very well done, thank you. Uh, I think that's uh maybe a good time to see if there's any public that wanna make any comments, if there's no further questions of staff. I think uh, you know, this meeting on on Wednesday, I hope we'll get a good turnout, I hope we'll get feedback. You know, it it is about, it is about the evacuation, the E S S and the return of the community. It's not yet about uh what our wildfire resiliency plan looks like going forward, that that's gonna take years to accomplish, um, there's no way we're gonna get that done in, you know, a meeting, that that's going to take committees and it's gonna take a an awful lot of resources to bring all of those people together to say what's next as we move forward. So uh, you know, as long as, as long as everybody aware that's not any surprises, we're really not intending to talk about the resiliency plan. Uh, if if somebody has a comment that that we can capture, we'll capture it. Um, but we're not gonna spend a lot of time on that at this moment, but I think uh it's time to get as much feedback as we can so that we can look at our evacuation plans, give feedback to the province, and then understand uh whether or not there's efforts that we need to, uh, because there was definitely some legislation we ran up against that that impacted our ability to do things um, in a timely way, I guess, and so yeah, so I hope we'll get a lot of information on that, there's really there's really an awful lot of work to be done, so I'm looking forward to the meeting and the feedback that we get on Wednesday night. Okay, adjournment is in order, so we start again at six thirty. Thank you very much, everybody.